Yeah, that's. Well, it is just a few seconds shy of five o'clock and I will call our meeting to order. And if everybody join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Klinger.
Here.
Councilmember Sherbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bradley.
Here. Okay, everybody's here. First item tonight is approval of the agenda. I approve the agenda. Okay, motion for approval. Do your second. A second. And we, and I understand there are no changes. So Linda?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Sorry, jumped around. Apologize for that. Next is our public input period. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to 30 minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input unless they relate to action items on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak to tonight? I'm hearing none, so we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. All right, first item on that consent agenda is the approval in the minutes from the July 24 regular council meeting and the August 7 committee of the whole meeting. Next item is need an approval for resolution 66 approving the bills. We then need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the following city reports from the parking wreck, the wastewater report and board of adjustments minutes. Next need a motion to approve applications for the Iowa retail cigarette permits and that's from Pink Cloud Cigarette. Where are they located? I don't even, I've never heard of this.
They're going under West Schulte's building where. The bills used to be.
Okay, I knew the address, but I, is, when are they opening? You don't know?
I'm not certain. I think the, when I talked to the retailer, I think he was hoping for first of October.
Awesome. Right. Next, we have a motion to approve the payment to the following downtown incentive grants. There is a facade grant, the amount of $3,472.46 to Heim's Awards for their building on 121 East Main Street and an interior grant in the amount of $2470.92 to flex that studio for the building at 208 West Marion Street. Need a motion to approve resolution 67 and that's salary amendment or circulation clerk and children's librarian. Also need a motion to proceed with a second consideration and adoption of ordinance six. This is language for the vicious dog, potentially vicious dog ordinance. Next need a motion to proceed with the second consideration adoption for establishing the grades on the streets as listed for our next street improvement project. Is that correct?
No, that's from 2022.
2022. Thank you. I'm sorry. Then next, we need a review of the decision of the board of adjustments regarding a property at 304 South Lane Street for Bob Murphy. Our next item is a motion to adopt resolution 68 and that's Joe Hildbrand work with the early handling hand to secure a 20 foot wide permanent underground sanitary sewer easement. Our next motion is to approve September 11, 2023 at 5:00 PM is the date and time for a public hearing on the voluntary annexation application of the Margaret E. Houlihan Revocable Trust and Eastern Iowa Plumbing Incorporated. And we also need a motion to adopt resolution 69, approving the subdivision flat of the Houlihan Ag subdivision number two. Our next item is a motion to adopt resolution 70 approving the subdivision flat of a hoster subdivision. And then we need a motion to approve the receipt of unpaid nuisance snow removal and nuisance mowing fees for some properties that we have not been able to collect on. And our final item is an approval of a payment of claims totaling $22,701.50 to per gram for engineering services for our East Main Street project for 2022 and 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda so we can have any questions or comments?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Hey, Mary Ann?
I'll second that.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns or comments? Hearing none. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right. Next, we don't have any public hearings or anything, so we'll go on to our regular agenda items. Our first item tonight is we need an approval, motion to adopt resolution 71 and this is regarding a change order number 11. This is going to result in some adjustments. Oh, it's a change order that will reduce the total project construction price by $96,000. That's a nice thing to that. Yes, do you want to speak to that, Tim?
Actually, I can let Sam talk about it.
So it's a change order in every project, kind of balancing quantities out. Look, there's some overrun, some underruns. I think one of the kind of bigger savings, I know we didn't, the west half, Perry said the sub rate was stable, so we kind of cut out quite a bit of extra excavation that we didn't need as well as some of the larger recycled concrete. But yeah, just kind of say overrun, underruns based on field measurements for a bunch of stuff. And then instead of pay us the 12 for final retainer as well, but it's just kind of balancing everything out. Maybe came under, under the bid by, I think it was by about $53,000. $54,000, so the end construction cost came in under what was bid.
Wonderful. Yes, we'll take that. Okay, do I have a motion to approve this? Yes, you do. All right, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Sam? Tim? All right, Tanya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann? Yes.
All right. Next, we have an approval pay estimate number 12. And that's in the amount of $101,170 to Pierce Tobin Construction and that's for the East Main Street Improvement Project. Do you want to say?
Well, this is just the final retention. Once we accept, formally accept the project, this will be released 30 days after that.
Do I hear a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment.
Linda, okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions on that? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next before us is resolution 72 and that's accepting the work covering the East Main Street project improvement project. I have a motion for that.
I would make that motion.
Dean? Any further questions? So this is, this is the last portion of this part.
It's part of the special assessment proceedings.
Okay, awesome. Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
And Tanya?
Yes.
Okay, next we have before us is a motion to adopt resolution 73 and that's adopting the final assessment schedule for the East Main Street Improvement Project and amending, confirming and levying the assessments. Tim?
Now that we have all the final costs in place, we know what the costs were, we go through and determine what the final assessment costs are for each item, whether it was curb, gutter, driveway, sidewalk. We sent out the letter prior to work starting with not to exceed them out for assessments. Now that we have the final cost, we come in. And I, Sam, we're down a little bit on these.
Yep, so all of them came in under the preliminary assessments, I believe, except one property, I think the bowling alley property, I think it was only over about a hundred dollars. So they just pay that preliminary assessment out. The rest of them all came under the preliminary number, so.
I move for approval of resolution 73.
Okay, I get it. Motion for Mary Ann, do your second. I'll second that. Any further questions? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Next, before us, we have a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance number eight. And that is the use of the public right of way. Do you want to go ahead and speak to that, Tim?
As we talked during our committee, the whole meeting, this is a rewrite of our use of the public right of way ordinance. In the previous attempt, when we worked on that, we were looking at pretty much requiring some sort of franchise agreement for people that are wanting to put utilities in the right of way, mainly we were looking at gearing this towards fibers going in the ground because we had so many different utilities or companies putting fiber in our right of ways and not necessarily serving our residents. And the fiber was creating some issues as far as reconstruction, reconstruction of the streets, they were in the way. We had a number of places where they were hitting other services, sanitary sewer service line or water service or water main. So we were trying to figure out some way in which we can regulate them and control how they're putting the utilities in our right of way. This modification, instead of an annual report or a collection fee, this is the one time we said that we issue a right of way permit. We've got the piece identified in there. Basically, there's a free application fee of $200 because what we do is we sit down with all the department heads in the right, Public Works, Street, Water and Sewer, along with the building official and myself, we sit down, we review the applications they submit to us as far as the work they're wanting to do and try to guide them where there's going to be less conflict with our utilities in the projects we have coming up. Also, we do understand where our currently is gas and electrical is underground and then yeah, other fibers are in the ground. So there is a cost of that. And so we're trying to group some of those costs. And then there's a cost, it's a thousand dollars per 15 RFP. If you're not serving residents within the city of Manchester. If you're serving residents in City of Manchester, we did reduce that down because that's a service then for residents. And we are trying to encourage more fiber in the country.
Absolutely.
Because that's just giving us that a benefit for residents to be able to have the high speed of access. So that is really kind of what this ordinance amendment does.
So hearing all that.
Can I ask a question? Is this retroactive?
No.
Okay, so it's who wants to come in after?
After the passage of that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I make a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption.
I misspoke. It's a hundred dollars per 1500 square feet.
Not a thousand.
It's a thousand.
Okay, that sounds even better.
Yeah. Oh, well.
Well, to encourage somebody to come to town.
But the thousand dollars is if they're not doing a mile.
Right.
Then we have a basic a thousand. Because again, there is still a lot of work that our guys do, where there's one goal is locating and stuff like that.
You still want that motion?
Yes, I do. I still have a motion.
All right, so I have a second. A second. Any further questions? Bill?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion to approve a liquor license for, you guys got to see this, it's a very unique vending machine law waiver. It's, it's, do you want to talk about what this is?
Yeah, it has the, the McBride Mobile Tap owner contacted me. They're applying for a five day special class C alcohol license, which is not uncommon. The chamber does that when they're having an event or the fairgrounds for an event they're having on September 23, I think, at the Sherman Pumpkin Farm. But for the mobile tap, they have the alcoholic beverages also requires that they get a waiver from the local authority to the vending machine law. That's not something we usually have, but it's, it's, it's just something I need a waiver for us to grant them permission to have this mobile, mobile truck there. It looks like a neat machine and it's, you know, a one day event. Dean could probably speak a little bit to it. I know her daughter and son-in-law.
My daughter and son-in-law planned this event. It's the same night as homecoming. They're also going to have a brick fired pizza and music.
Yeah, we're the music.
Starting to do some events there, a lot of them, but should be an exciting time. That's, that's the night when a lot of parents and grandparents come and the homecoming kids take pictures and they might as well have a little fun while they're there. Should be an event.
Anybody have any questions on that? None? I'll entertain a motion to approve this liquor license.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Bill? Do you hear a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And?
Abstaining.
Dean's abstaining. Okay. All right, next item is some information regarding airport expansion project update. Jim Peters, as our attorney, will speak to this.
We're just going through, we have the initial phases, what we have to do to comply with state code. The basic process is, well, we have to set a public hearing. We give notice to the property owners for whom we're trying to acquire the property from and they can come speak to whether this is a proper project, whether it's proper for they can speak for or against it for whatever reason at the hearing. After that hearing, then the city council would be presented with a resolution if they wish to move forward with the project. Now, before that time, we will have given notice to the property owners so they can come and call, see the plans, talk to Kim, talk to me about what can be expected. And we go through that process. After the resolution that you would be approving would not say condemnation because we're still hoping not to need condemnation. But the resolution would approve seeking acquisition through negotiation and in the event that fails authorizing the city managers, the attorneys to move forward with condemnation as an alternative. At that point, we would have updated appraisals to the owners and go through some negotiations with them. Make, then we would be coming back at some point if things fail to reach an agreement. You would become, we would come to you and make a proposal of a determination of the value or the fair market value of the property you're buying. Basically, what is the price you're going to make for your last offer? That last offer is then given and that offer is also, and we'll talk about this in more detail later, but that offer if the condemnation board awards more than our last offer, then we can be required to pay some attorney fees because we should have made an an offer that meets with that. That's the, so you have incentive not to undercut yourself. And if all that happens after the notice, we would, we have the chief judge of our district appoint a condemnation commission and we would present our case to them. But a lot of little hoops to jump through in between. So that's really the basic process, the base, the next step would be for us to have the public hearing. I think Tim said he would look on September 26.
25th, I think it's November.
September 25th would be our second council meeting in September.
We would be publishing notice of this hearing and certified mail to the property. Any questions about how the process works?
This is another opportunity, basically, for us to be able to come to the table and talk.
Right, we are not stopping the talking, but we're letting them know that we're giving authority. We're either going to talk or we will have to lie. If that's what the council decides.
That's what the council decides, yeah. I mean, I think we've all wanted this to be an applicable, amicable, amicable. That's what I'm looking for. For a way to work forward that we can all work together.
And with land prices, the way they have and interest rates going. We'll have to update appraisals because six months is a long time in this market. And the property owner gets to be there with the appraiser, come out on the land with him. So I mean, there's nothing behind anybody's back. It's all right, everything's pretty much an open book.
All right, and this does not need a motion. Everything's just information for tonight.
This is just information, so you see the letter that will be sent out because that letter will have to be sent out before.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, next item, we have the city stat and we have discussion information. You guys have discussed an update on the current status of the nuisance abatement cases that you're working on to address.
Yeah, generally, I didn't get a chance to quite get together beforehand, but we do have another nuisance abatement cases that we are working on and RJ is, I see.
I can't update.
Update those and then we'll talk about the abandoned properties that we want to start working on.
We have one property. We've served, we have two that have been served that we're waiting for their deadline for providing their answer or response to the court. We have one property that we have a judgment entered against them. They've been ordered to abate the nuisance. The steps that we take after we get that order then is we give them a little time to do it, 30 days. And if they don't, we come back to the court and ask for authority to take the action, go on the property ourselves, abate the nuisance and assess the cost to the property. So we have looks like three properties that were at that stage waiting for them to likely not finish. But it's, you have to give them the time because we don't want to be doing on property without, without a judge's blessing. Either there are procedures where you don't have to do it that way. I just don't want to do them that way because without the judge, they can come back later and make us fight whether or not we were appropriate to do it. So we have one, two, three, we have five of those pending right now. It's like three of them. We're waiting to see if they correct. There was one abandoned building we were looking at and I think we started that a while back and we didn't have to finish it because they took the building down.
Yeah, but I do want to talk to Jim about that because we're still mowing the property, so it's not being maintained somewhat.
Now it's a nuisance.
It's a nuisance. And so I do think we want to go after that as an abandoned property. Because I'm not so sure.
I'm not sure we can go after an abandoned when the house is gone.
Well, I'm not sure that the property tax has been paid, but I'm not sure they're paying it or someone else's.
And we'll have to go with, but now with that said, I understand we have quite a few abandoned properties, abandoned homes and businesses can be used to acquire the property. But they not just have to be abandoned, they have to be a public nuisance as well. So if all the windows are intact and the roof doesn't have holes in it and it's rain tight, it may be ugly, but it's probably not a nuisance. So you, so sometimes people forget that the abandoned property acquisition requires both phases, nuisance and abandonment. Takes roughly three months to get there to a hearing on those, but they're fairly straightforward. And the nuisance abatements. As long as we have pictures and everything and you boys had pretty good luck with that, they're pretty easy to get caught. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to keep moving forward.
What if they haven't, I mean, they've been for four years putting siding on a house?
They still have a building permit?
Yeah, they're in lies, part of the problem.
Yeah. I know we've talked about putting a deadline on. See, we would have a violation. They didn't finish the permit. We've done it in the past, gone after somebody who didn't put the siding back on a house. There was one.
One on Butler.
Yeah, there was one we did, but they fixed it. Never had to go to court. I think those are going to have to be a case by case. If they're missing one piece of siding, that's going to be different than not having any siding on their house. But that's if we're going to start doing it, we should start doing it sooner than later because once it gets with a foot of snow on the ground, they have a great excuse not to remove things or fix things.
Right.
And we're given more time.
Is there a way that these complaints can be made public? I mean, put them, be dealt with at a council meeting and be notified and the council be notified of who's in violation of these, of the code.
When they're filed with the court, their public record.
But it never gets talked about at a public meeting. I'm just saying, if people knew that if they didn't comply with some sort of standard of quality, maybe we can shame them into doing more than the law will do.
Many of my smaller towns, peer pressure does more than the city council.
But if nobody's reading the legal notice in the back of the newspaper, nobody even knows that we're having this issue other than, and then they call us and complain and we say, well, there's nothing we can do. And that's not acceptable.
I could have a list of addresses and the status of where they're at as far as the nuisance.
I'd like to see it almost as a council agenda item, maybe every quarter or something, you know, who, and who is in violation and where do we stand on that? So, so that it's not being quietly held, dealt with in the court system and.
Like I just did, I didn't mention any of those names to you here if it went through.
But I think we, but I think we could mention.
We sure could. I just didn't. But we could.
I think the town hall, why did they just, like 26 properties I saw they took down?
Yeah, they, when they adopted their rental housing code, there were a number of properties that were rentals that would not be able to meet those code requirements. And the landlord or property owner at that time deeded them all to the city.
All?
Well, the 26, yeah.
Deeded them to the city.
So that was, the city had an expense to take them all down and then deal with them. So that's where I get a little cautious on this because we talk about nuisance abatements and, you know, we have to abandon properties. There's an expense that, there are resources that are being used, expended because there's resources with city staff, time doing this, there are resources with the city attorney in their office. And then once we get a hold of them, then there's the cost of abating this. So I, that's a budgetary item we will be working with as we go through.
The nuisance abatements tend to be more cost effective than tearing down. I mean, nuisance abatements, we can get quite a bit of mileage out of.
Well, that's the point that I've tried.
You might accidentally own.
Yes, the point that I would like to see is, is for us to address these issues long before it becomes a house that the city needs to acquire and tear down. If, if we allow them to become ramshackled, run down, it's more likely, you know, as time goes on, that those are the houses that the city has to spend money to tear down and taxpayers have to take care of it. We should be addressing those issues when they're small instead of when they're irreparable.
Kind of like Dean's idea of, of publishing some of the addresses because you never know, the neighbor might know somebody who knows somebody that can find the homeowner and say, hey, your property's in the paper, you know, oh, did you know that? Well, yes, I haven't done anything with it forever, but at least it puts it in his mind now that something needs to be done.
Or the reasoning why that it's considered a nuisance property to maybe people more of an understanding of what to watch out for, what not.
Would you like to live next door to it?
It does negatively affect the neighbor's property values and it affects the whole entire community when they're in real visible locations. Yeah, it's just slippery slope sometimes when we start telling people what to do with their private property and we don't want to be violating anybody's civil rights, but at the same time, if, if what they're doing is that. If if what they're doing is it is harmful to other people, it needs to be addressed.
We will work on that, and at this point, we will have a monthly. Uh on the probably first council meeting of the month, we'll have an update on the nuisance payment, where we're at, and we'll have a list of properties on.
Yeah, it'd be an easy report to put together.
Good, good.
Alright, that completes our consent agenda, so um. Sam, do you want to speak? We'll go ahead, engineering updates, and I'll go ahead and continue with information.
Not a whole lot, except a little, we went over on all the final systems up for East Main Street. Um one sidewalk panel that was cracked for the apartments, city staff had just actually drove through this morning, seen that it's all been taken care of out there. Everything's been grounded, needs to be ground. And then the street up on Love and Drive, that's all been ground, I sure I've got that taken care of. I'm just kind of thinking through ongoing kind of different calls, emails, um and site meetings with utilities out there as they kind of progress through. Windstream, I don't, Tim, do you know if they've submitted for a permit yet? So that's the only one, um Alliant should have their stuff done here at the end of August. The week of twenty eighth, somewhere around that last week in August, they should have everything done, energized. And then it's just a matter of media kind of wind stream getting off all the old poles, so poles can be taken down. Um it's last, my last contact with MediaCom, it sounds like they're kind of on the same timeline as Alliant. So they're kind of working through getting things done, the other one is Windstream, they haven't started construction yet. They've sent us their plans, um I gave them comments back, I think that was two or three weeks ago. And last thing, I think it's two weeks old, and I talked to them, they're going through their final permitting and approvals through Windstream and then they had to reach out to the city for a permit, so. We've been letting them know that, you know, we want to get it done before the ground freezes, so I can get that. So that's, I guess we're right with utilities, so I think Windstream is the only one that's kind of outstanding right now. Have radio easement letters have been sent out, um actually got a phone call today from a, from a property owner with a few questions. And Tim had some, had some discussions with some of the property owners, cities seeking permanent easement for. I think so, that pretty much covers everything from my side unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Jason. Are you out of my office?
Yeah. Right before I came here, um so we've got a meeting on Wednesday tonight with uh Jane Doe at the Fair Board. To discuss the more particulars on the Grand Avenue extension and kind of just making sure we understand what their visions are, if they have any, right? They want to do up there, make sure that we'll be doing the right away improvements of the street. What they want to do up there. So that's pretty much, you know, doing that, and we've got it going, going right now to begin with. Jason, hey, you're running a court, uh hope you stay, get those courts done ourselves. So we'll be doing that here in the next couple of weeks. That's all I have, most of my questions.
Alright, uh we'll go to Jim.
I have nothing else to do.
Okay, Tim?
I am planning on taking vacation from September first to September tenth. Will be out of state at that time, but uh other than that, Aaron is working to get everyone that wants to be registered for the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference in Cedar Rapids.
Yes.
Now, who's wanting to attend or able to attend, we'll get you registered, take care of that way. Sunday is Jody's last day at the pool, so one to five, uh we do have pre-admission. So um please stop by, thank Jody for all of her years of service, she's been a tremendous asset for us at the pool.
She's awesome.
And then I did talk to the contractor that's doing the shade structure, he's got it built. We had to go through what the finish is going to be on that, there's a big chunk of steel next to my office. Initially, the architect in him had thought about doing a uh patina steel with the ceiling on it. And I didn't like that, so we're gonna do a butter coat black. Imagine with the railings in the area, uh we still have the laminate wood beams across the top, so it's gonna have that no wood finish to it. And we're hoping to have that in the next two weeks.
We're gonna do ribbon cutting for that after the shade structure gets up, correct? Did the scissors not work the other day?
But that way we don't waste a lot of ribbon.
That's true.
I think the problem was actually the ribbon.
Just Haley and Laura worked really hard on getting lead and copper letters ready and sent out this last, end of last week, so those uh. Went to the post office today and we'll be hitting, I think, about fourteen hundred homes. There's the option to respond on paper or there's a link on the city's website. And um we're anticipating probably some phone calls and uh the water department will probably have to go out and assist some people, because. Not everyone's gonna know how to, how to respond, but it was good to get the mailing out.
Aaron, did the, eh, the landlords get a lump?
Yes, we did go ahead and do it that route. Thank you for that suggestion.
Anything else, Aaron?
No, that's it.
Bill?
Uh, nothing, do I?
Okay, are you? Tanya? Um I think the, I'm sure the polka dot went very well this year, some pretty good bands, they had pretty decent turnout, whether cooperative for the most part, so we're looking forward to. Turns like at them fans for next year.
We already got one. We got one already. Yep, so, okay, Dean?
I noticed the gazebos come along really nice with silent concrete work is done, is there gonna be a railing around the bottom?
No, we're not railing around, but we will probably look at uh putting a cap around that bottom piece. To hide the braces that are beneath there. There has been some discussions to see if the uh school would do the uh brickwork kind of as part of their internship, but it sounds like they're booked up for the next couple of years. Uh so Tim Heims and he's our main contractor, looking at some ways to uh box those out, so that way we don't have that issue there. The concrete's in, Rick Ray did a nice job, we we have the sidewalk cord now, we do have two box outs for benches there. You also notice a couple pedestals, we do have a archway that was donated as part of the uh, the University of Iowa graduate students. That'll go, and right now we're looking at probably trying to get that up Sunday, or not Sunday, Friday. We want the concrete to get a little bit harder before we start growing into it and stuff.
And so landscaping and get the grass going in.
Landscaping, I got jumped on that a little bit, definition of landscaping, my landscaping is bushes and shrubs and trees. Not necessarily a big garden area with flowers, so we're trying to keep it so it's a minimal maintenance, but it does have more trees, more color, more variety there.
I get some nice entrance into the. Direct should go to Terrell. Well, like Bubba, is this uh, will there be a bumper that kind of goes. At the north side by the house there that's.
That that's something I want to work with uh some people that do gardening and landscaping and kind of talk about. What kind of trees we want to put through there, because we do want a variety of trees. Just because we've been dealing so much with ash trees and now maple trees, um see what we can kind of put up there. But I think it's. You know. Out loud here, I think I'd like to see a, an oak tree or two up there, just because that's, takes forever for them and and they are majestic, big trees. It's just you gotta get them started.
Seems like so many of our oak trees we've lost, there's so many dying throughout town.
Taking a number of out of uh Terrell Parks and trying to replenish them.
Yeah.
But they're old. It takes a while, yeah, so you gotta look to the future, you can't just look for them more at them.
Yeah.
Those are things we'll, we'll probably sit down and talk to a couple of nurses around here and. See if we can get some ideas what to put together, because again, part of this is also try to minimize a grievance clause.
Um, I just have a few things I want to say, first off, um I want to thank everybody for all your kindnesses and everything during my mom's. Little journey, um we buried my mom last Monday, so um, but all of you guys were very kind, thank you for filling in for me. Where I needed to be and so forth during all that time, so thank you very much. Um I had a lady call me, um the first day back into the city office and she had. Met with some stuff at uh one of the parks, she was at a birthday party at Terrell Park, I believe is where she was at and. Little five, six year old girl was having a birthday party and some older kids drove by and yelled some. Not nice words at her that were kind of racist kind of things, and she was very upset that that was happening in our community. Unfortunately, we can't always control what. Little kids do or young kids do when they don't have parental people around them and. I talked to her about that and she just asked me and I agree with her that we need to start reminding everybody that we all live in the same sandbox. We all need to start being kind, we need to start loving our neighbors instead of being mad at each other all the time, so. Um and I think in a world of negativity. We need to start finding the positive, I know uh Mary Ann and I are gonna be starting now, uh getting our year of uh. Your kindness is what we're going to be doing and we're gonna be working with uh. Everybody, see her and follow the stuff and try to get some projects going so people can start um embracing each other as neighbors and that we're not all enemies. Like the hires want us to do, I also want to send a shout out to a citizen in Manchester, I'm gonna just say her name, Kristy Kudina. She is, she is just a world of positivity and I want to kind of state her Facebook post. In a world full of negativity, I've got some positive observations and a few people need to be applauded. To the Manchester Streets Department, my walking, running shoes cover a lot of miles on every street and the streets are so clean, I could eat off them. It's incredible how impeccable they are, to the City Department who waters the beautiful flower baskets, new to the streetscape this year. I'm sure it's not a fun task, but your work is appreciated. To those who take care of the bathrooms in every city park and parks in general, thank you for a run from a runner who makes use of every one of them, your work is appreciated. I know there are a lot of rumblings about the gazebo being new to Terrell Park, but a green space is preferable to a decrepit old building and that was an eyesore. I was skeptical of the plan for the Whitewater Park area after the gazebo was removed, but it's gorgeous. To the Manchester Police Department, you have a visible, very visible presence at all hours of the day. Except she doesn't know what, between midnight and five, because she stays at home, but um I'm not awake, but I'm. I'm sure uh I'm transporting a raccoon is, um you're transporting a raccoon to Shram Park or something. I feel extremely safe running and walking any time of day because I see you. So um I imagine if being a stranger passing through Manchester, I would have a very positive impression and I appreciate everyone who keeps this town beautiful and safe. So thank you to everybody, and remember, we are still looking for our very first nice neighbor award. So if you've got somebody who's doing something kind for you or doing something good for the city, please let us know, we'd like to acknowledge them. So again, thank you for all your kindnesses. I have a motion for Dean for adjournment, a second for Linda, and we are adjourned, have a wonderful evening.